I'll start out with the opening announcement. Adequate public notice of this meeting was provided by the Secretary of the Board on May 10, 2021 to the Hall News Tribune, Star Ledger, and the Clerk of the City of New Brunswick. The time and location of this meeting and all meetings of this body are posted in City Hall 78 Bryant Street, New Brunswick. Roll call, Mr. General.
Ms. Ortiz.
Here.
This is Sedowski.
Here.
This is Seawood.
Here.
This is Shikitis.
Here.
This is Solis.
He is excused this evening.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Ms. Morella.
Here.
Ms. Sedia.
Here.
Dr. Caldwell.
Here.
We have a forum.
Item number two, the flag salute. Dr. Johnson, please listen to the flag salute.
Ready, salute. I salute the agents to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
A reminder, the next regular monthly Board of Education meeting will be held on Tuesday, October 19, 2021, beginning at 7:00 p.m. right here in the high school in the auditorium. Do I hear a motion for item number three, the minutes of August 17? Second, roll call, Mr. General.
Ms. Ortiz.
Yes.
This is Sedowski.
Next in.
This is Seawood.
Yes.
This is Shikitis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Ms. Morella.
Yep.
Ms. Sedia.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, item number five, and if the Board will forgive me if I tear up, I've been on the Board 23 years, this is one of the most proud moments I've ever had on the New Brunswick Board of Education. I have the honor of introducing a young woman who, when she was three, started at Woodrow Wilson, she's been in the New Brunswick school system for 14 years and knows it better than just about anybody, and so it's with great honor to introduce this Ashley Caldwell.
Hello, I'm honored to be with you today. My name is Ashley Caldwell, and I've been a New Brunswick student since I was three years old. I am honored to represent the students on the Board, so thank you for having me. On August 5, students who were enrolled in the summer jazz band program performed in the high school auditorium. The students were joined by musicians from the New Brunswick Jazz Project. Mr. Michael Toblin, one of the founders of the New Brunswick Jazz Project, attended the performance. Principal Redler invited New Brunswick high school athletes to pause their practices to enjoy their performance. All students sat safely apart from each other and wore masks. The musicians used bell covers and wind instruments to protect each other onstage. All students' music programs have been outfitted with these masks for the upcoming school year. On August 17, rising ninth grade students from the middle school, K through eighth grade students, and the Greater New Brunswick Charter School were invited to New Brunswick High School to attend freshman orientation. The event was well received and brought excitement and wonder to the building as incoming freshman students received information and a tour of the building from students enrolled in the peer leadership program. SAT exams took place in New Brunswick High School Saturday, August 28. COVID safety protocol was adhered to. Almost 400 students, including New Brunswick students, registered for the exam. The first day of school for New Brunswick High School students was Thursday, September 9. All students were required to wear masks and socially distance. This was the first day many had been in the school building in over a year and a half, and so far, it's been good. As it's the beginning of the year, I want to give a shout out to the security guards for ensuring our safety this year. Thank you, this concludes my report.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Caldwell, great job, great job. Item number six, Facilities Committee report, Mr. Edward Spencer.
Yes, Mr. President. The Facility Committee report, committee met last week. Some of the issues that we discussed were the planned scope of required tree cutting and trimming at Woodrow Wilson School. A scheduled time related to the installation of the new gym floor at Ruthville School. The other issue was related to some of the windows leaking and the new addition at Paul Robinson School. We are working with the school development authority to resolve this issue. As a result of top of the storm, I had damage, severe damage to our, to the Memorial Stadium. We were unable to have some of our games and our practices on the field. I can say today, the field has been completed and we're prepared to have our practices and our games at the stadium. Additionally, we discussed the progress of the Blanquita v. Volunté Community Schools project. DMR architects have completed 50% of the required construction documents needed to build the school. They are scheduled to reach 100% by the beginning of October. The foundation and structural portion of the documents are currently 100% complete. The final educational approval was received from the Department of Education on August 18, 2021. As the name implies, this is the last approval needed from the Department of Education. The NJDCA build review is currently in progress for structural and underground slab plumbing work. The elevator plan review received, release was received on 8, on August 16, 2021, and partial electrical underground plan review was received on 9/7/2021. Soil erosion and sediment control plan approval was June 8, 2021. The treatment works approval, TWA, August 11, 2021. The water main extension permit was completed August 20, 2021. Stormwater management plan review, conditional approval, August 20, 2021. All pre-construction remedial actions have been completed, including removal of all contaminant soil and concrete from the site. Evacuation of contaminated materials included the removal of total of 623 tons of PCB impacted or petroleum impact concrete and soil, which equals 28 truckloads. Total was removed under the direction of the LSRP for this project. Capping of the historical fill on-site will occur during the building construction and site development phase. Last week, DEFCO issued a notice to proceed to Epic, the building contractor, allowing them to move forward with the concrete, structural steel, site work, and elevator contracts. Epic has started mobilization on-site, is started this week with site survey crews, and will progressively ramp up in the next two weeks with site clearing and grading work taking place. The current schedule has evacuated for footings, foundation, and formwork, including rebar and concrete occurring between October 1, 2021, and January 15, 2022. The start of the structural steel erection is currently scheduled for January 15, 2022. Substantial completion of the school is still on track for August of 2023. Mr. President, this concludes my report.
Thank you. Mr. Spencer, we'll move to item number seven, the Athletic Committee report. Mrs. Patricia Sedowski, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Athletic Committee met yesterday afternoon, and some of the highlights, we, well, the big highlight right now is that they are using the stadium right now for a soccer game, so our issues with this turf field have been resolved. Homecoming game will be October 1 versus Edison. Everybody come on out and see a really good football game. And the athletic schedules are on the website, so check them out. Our girls soccer, boys soccer, tennis team, everybody's got the schedule there, and you can check it out and come out and have a nice afternoon or evening watching our students. A proposal for stadium lights was submitted to our business office. High school and middle school gym floors are finished. The number of students participating in athletics is increasing every day, and as of 9/2021, there were 313 students signed up for athletics. And as I said, more are coming in every day. They have to go through the physical and then get approved to play. Teams have been working out all summer following strict COVID guidelines and will continue to do so through the fall. Right now, the sports records are, football are 2-1, boys soccer is 2-1-1, girls soccer is 1-2-2, tennis is 4-2, volleyball, girls volleyball is 2-3, cross country is, boys is one meet, they've won and the girls have lost one meet. They're looking into sports Instagram pages, apparently some have already been started, and also on Facebook, there's NBHSE, there's football, there's ones for soccer, so take a look if you're on, and some pretty interesting things. And the stadium, as I just said, is scheduled to be fixed before the next home game, and it was. So the only thing that I need is a motion to accept the bank reconciliation.
Someone, second. Roll call, Mr. General.
Ms. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Sedowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Shikitis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Ms. Morella.
Yes.
Ms. Sedia.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Motion approved.
And Ms. Sedowski, the only thing I would add, and you wouldn't know this, is that our, our student representative is 6-0 in tennis during the regular season, and she got to the quarters of the county tournament.
I know that.
So.
I didn't report it out, because I know Ashley did report some of it out, but yes, we have a star in our midst, so, but everybody get out there and support everybody, because all our athletes need your support, and they are all doing a great job, and hopefully everything will go smoothly for this athletic season. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Item number eight, the Curriculum Policy Committee report. This is Emira L. Seawood, Chairperson, for yours.
Okay, the curriculum and policy committees met last week. We had updates on the instructional options for remote students due to a COVID-related illness. Our curriculum and instructional department.
Franklin.
tries to make sure that we're well-prepared, so they do have a plan, just in case some of our students are required to quarantine at home, and we want to do everything we can so that the student does not lose academic time, try to keep them focused even though they are required to quarantine. I believe Dr. Johnson had noted that the testing has started, no, will start next week, and by testing the content areas, the three main content areas will be, let's see if I can find it. English Language Arts and Math and Science. So testing window will be September 27, next week, through October 1. Make-up testing will be scheduled on October 22. And I believe the testing schedule is on the website. Okay, so it appears on our way. And this gives us, this will give us an indication of exactly where our students are, so we encourage you to, encourage all students to participate, because we want to, well, we're already off to a good start this year, and we want to continue progress. We reviewed all resolutions, and they're included on the consent agenda. In addition, we reviewed policy revisions, regulations, and then referred to the Board for approval, first reading, because there's, I believe there's no new policies, there's just some fine tuning and more in the language, because, you know, our wonderful stadium employees make sure we have to change phrase this whenever possible, so most of the policy revisions have to do with word. And I believe that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Seawood. Item number, Educational Services Commission of New Jersey report. The Educational Services Commission of New Jersey report, I just pulled up on my computer. This has been a great year to start off, you know, working with special needs students and emotionally challenged students. A lot of planning went into it, so it's gone very well. But I was pulling up on my computer, one of the big things that we have on September 30th, it's called the Middlesex County Educators Summit on Student Mental Health, and the Prosecutor's Office and the Educational Services Commission and other educators are putting this summit on to really talk about the issues of mental health, which are more important than ever, and in all aspects of it, you know, in the urban, suburban, rural communities. And so we're starting to recognize, as we saw in the Olympics, how important mental health is to the well-being of everybody, and that, that nobody is above it or beyond it, and so, so we're really excited about, about this at the, at the commission, which has a beautiful conference, conference center that's open for use for, for all sorts of educational and other institutions. With that, that's, that's my report. We'll move to public comments. If you, Rich, those that have signed up to speak.
Yes, Dr. Caldwell, the first person on the microphone is Danielle Moore.
If you wouldn't mind saying your name and address, or Mr. address.
Hi, yes, Danielle Moore, Somerset Street. First, I would just like to say my prayers go out to the student and the family that they hit by car number 27. And one thing, is it true that Roosevelt School was shut down due to where you had so many children had tested positive for COVID-19?
One of the things we're going to do is ask, if you wouldn't mind, just, if you could mention your questions in advance, so that's, that's one question, what we'll do.
Okay, and then is it true that what you have, a teacher test positive here with COVID-19, due to where, the way I'm seeing in New Brunswick, whether you've been vaccinated or not, too many people are still getting COVID-19, and due to where these schools are super overcrowded, I still do not trust the schools being, being open due to where the cases are on the rise. Now, as Sammy, you've been vaccinated a genuine day, how you have to get a booster shot, due to where I've been seeing too many people have been vaccinated already, still getting COVID-19. So please, I hope you do look into it, to where I, the person that I do have special visions, I do not see that it's going to be under control with COVID-19 spreading throughout our students. And like I said, due to where I am a person with special vision, due to where, wow, just like I warned you about 131 Jersey Avenue, due to where, what, if it wasn't for me, speaking about, about it, to the state regards to flooding, the worst flooding ever that road, and the road was totally underwater over there, due to where, just like, well, well, I'm really disappointed that it took you, Dr. Caldwell, to really become a victim in an accident, you didn't really believe in the safety, how, oh my, you were so concerned, oh, please stop using telephones on Friday, just because that was your situation. But like I said, please, it's sad that you have to become a victim of, really believe in safety, all I'm doing is trying to explain the safety, saying, you know, that I told you, oh, wow, the Lord trying to tell you something, when you had, guys, there are three accidents in 36 hours, right, 53rd Avenue, what, what did you say? Oh my, everything's going to be all right, but it took you, had to take you to get bitten earlier to understand safety, and due to where, like I said, I am a person with special visions to put the timing right, it'd be over there Friday, in front of Delve Island and the listening album, due to where I have the evidence of why I'm telling you, please, both Delve Island streets are off. How many children almost got hit while I had on video to be there that day? And I hope you, or you, I, even you the videos, for all of you to look at it, please, due to where, wow, it came to a close call that the security guard from Roosevelt School, which I have on video, had to close the road off, due to where now you have three schools over there. It lives in, now there's only one lane now, you must tell your parents that they forgot you to pick up their children, to where it creates an accident. I would get, that was Wednesday last week, to be on time to get the video. Whether you believe me or not, like I said, the city can't say I'm crazy when I say the Lord lets me see things for a reason. Just like I warned you, they're kidding, if you look it up on Facebook, I warned the council, and, ooh, the brother was going to be at the major funding, August 31st, I gave the alert to him. Did he listen? No. But like I said, why should people have to suffer, because people like you do not like to listen to someone who gets a warning to tell you. And please, like I said, I'm speaking with my heart, but you see the evidence of these, please, both Delve Island streets are off, because like I said, the crossing guard is out on the San Antonio Crossing, the car is turning, how a young boy almost got hit riding a bicycle, and another child almost got hit by the security guard having run out there to do it, it was the same day you had the fire, the fire dropped out there, how crazy it was. So please, take me seriously, and I do want to say thank you to two of your workers, I believe the maintenance workers, Mr. Sandy and Mr. Wally, who are safety hazard that was going on on the corner of Canyon Railroad regarding a truck and trailer, due to where they had the courage in their heart to really avoid, us helping out with a serious accident, avoiding an accident on, on the street, because I do have the video of them, I do think people that do have a good heart that really believe in safety, but I can't say it over too many times. I hope you really listen to me, avoid someone getting hit over there, due to where I have all the evidence to prove to you what I'm saying, if you don't do it, what's going to happen? Don't let somebody become a victim, because like I said, you don't believe what goes on. So when you're ready, I have the evidence.
Thank you so much for your comments. Have a good day. Who's next, Mr. General?
No comments from you, huh? I can say, why am I even getting the evidence?
Don't be a clown.
Dr. Caldwell, please state your address.
Charlie Cradwell, Sedam Street, New Brunswick, would like to ask about Resolution AE $200,000 for Viata. Can somebody tell me how they were selected?
Charlie, would you mind, could you give us all your questions first, so we can process that and get back to you after your comments?
Yeah, with all due respect, I'd like the answer now.
Excuse me?
I'd like the answer now.
I'm sorry, could you give us all your questions, please, first?
No.
Okay. Continue.
I'd like an answer to my question, please.
Continue, we're not answering.
You're not going to answer my question without.
I answered at the end.
$200,000.
Charlie, we answered at the end, I said.
Did I just witness?
You didn't.
A person bring you a question, you said, hold off, we'll answer when you're done, and then you didn't? Is that not just what happened?
Charlie, could you ask, could you ask your questions?
I just heard I asked another question, is that not just what happened? You, you didn't, didn't have a response to Danielle. She raised questions at the microphone. You're passing off, you're passing off your responsibility here.
Charlie, just continue, your time.
So I'd like to know how Viata was selected for this contract, $200,000 contract of taxpayer money, and I'll draw your attention to September 8, U.S. Attorney's Office press release book, a home health agency operator has agreed to pay $17 million to resolve allegations that it violated the False Claims Act by paying. due to where, just like, well, wow, I'm really disappointed that it took you, Dr. Caldwell, to really become a victim in an accident when you didn't really believe in the safety. How, oh my, you were so concerned, oh, please stop using telephones on Friday, just because that was your situation. But like I said, please, it's sad that you have to become a victim of, really believing in safety. All I'm doing trying to do is spite the safety, saying that I told, oh, wow, the Lord trying to tell you something when you had, guys, there are three accidents in 36 hours, right, by any Jersey Avenue? What did you say? Oh, my, everything's going to be all right? But it took you, had to take you to get bitten here early to understand safety. And due to where, like I said, I am a person with special visions to put the timing right to be over there Friday, in front of Delve and and the listening album, due to where I have the evidence of why I'm telling you. Please, both Delve and Street off. How many children almost got hit while I had on video to be there that day? And I hope you, or who, I emailed you the video for all of you to look at it, please, due to where, wow, it came to a close call that the security guard from Ruffell School, which I have on video, had to close the road off, due to where now you have three schools over there. It lives in, now there's only one lane now. You must tell your parents that they can let you to pick up their children, to where it creates an accident. I would get that was Wednesday, last week, to be on time to get the video. Whether you believe me or not, like I said, the city can't say I'm crazy when I say the Lord lets me see things for a reason. Just like I warned, they're kidding, if you look it up on Facebook, I warned the council, oh, and the brother was going to be at the major funding, August 31st, I gave the alert to him. Did he listen? No, but like I said, why should people have to suffer? Because people like you do not like to listen to someone who gets a warning to tell you. And please, like I said, I'm speaking with my heart, but you see the evidence of these. Please, both Delve and Street off, because like I said, the crossing guard is out on the Sinatra Crossing, the car is turning, how a young boy almost got hit riding a bicycle, and another child almost got hit by the security guard having run out there to do it. It was the same day you had the fire, but the fire kept out there, how crazy it was. So please, take me seriously, and I do want to say thank you to two of your workers, I believe, the maintenance workers, Mr. Sandy and Mr. Wally, who are safety hazard that was going on on a corner of Canyon Railroad regarding a truck and trailer, due to where they had the courage in their heart to really avoid, us helping out with a serious accident, avoiding an accident on the street. Because I do have the video of them. I do thank people that do have a good heart that really believes in safety, but I can't say it with too many times. I hope you really listen to me, avoid someone getting hit over there. Due to where I have all the evidence to prove to you what I'm saying, if you don't do it, what's going to happen? Don't let somebody become a victim, because like I said, you don't believe what goes on. So when you're ready, I have the evidence.
Thank you so much for your comments. Have a good day. Who's next, Ms. Darrow?
No comments from you, huh? I can say, why, I'm not even going to give the evidence.
Don't be a clown.
Mr. Crowell, please state your address.
Charlie Crowell, Sedam Street, New Brunswick. Like to ask about Resolution AE, $200,000 for Viata. Can somebody tell me how they were selected?
Charlie, would you mind, could you give us all your questions first, so we can process that and get back to you after your comments?
Yeah, with all due respect, I'd like the answer now.
Excuse me?
I'd like the answer now.
I'm sorry, could you give us all your questions, please, first?
No.
Okay. Continue.
I'd like an answer to my question, please.
Continue, we're not answering.
You're not going to answer my question about--
We'll answer it at the end.
$200,000.
Charlie, we'll answer it at the end, I said.
Did I just witness a person bring you a question? You said, hold off, we'll answer when you're done? And then you didn't? Is that not just what happened?
Charlie, could you ask, could you ask your questions?
I just heard I asked another question. Is that not just what happened? You didn't have a response to Danielle. She raised questions at the microphone. You're passing off the responsibility here.
Charlie, just continue, your time?
So I'd like to know how Viata was selected for this contract, $200,000 contract of taxpayer money. And I'll draw your attention to September 8th, U.S. Attorney's Office press release that a home health agency operator has agreed to pay $17 million to resolve allegations that it violated the False Claims Act by paying kickbacks. So I'd like you to tell me how you selected this company.
Okay. Well, you have other questions?
I do have other questions and comments, but I would like to hear right now how this company was selected. It's a fair question.
Charlie, we'll answer--
Past presidents of the board haven't have engaged in question and answer, as you know, having been one of those.
Charlie, we will answer it at the end.
Just like the answer Danielle's?
We can't.
Okay, well, I hope you will answer Danielle's concerns, because she's often right about safety issues. And, you know, I think that just from a perspective of respect, you should be responding to the questions that are asked. So I hope you will have an answer to how this company was selected, and if you knew about this kickback allegation. And I'll move on. Did I, did we hear that the new windows are leaking at the new Robeson School? Is that correct? Could you, through the chair for Mr. Spencer?
Ask the questions you ask. We'll answer the questions we can, Charlie.
Yeah.
Personal questions, we can't answer.
That's not a personnel question?
No, but the previous questions outside of the accusations were personnel questions about COVID. Those are the only questions I heard. We can't answer personal questions.
Okay, well, you could answer these questions right now. You know, I would like you to, because then when I hear the answers, I can ask follow-up questions. If you insist on having all the questions and then I shut up, then I can't ask follow-up questions. So it's pretty clear what you're trying to do here. And it's a joke, because as you said, you've been on the board 25 years. For how many of those years did the board not answer questions when the public brought them up right away?
Charlie, we're saying we're going to answer the questions, it's called public comments.
Right, but you're lying when you say it, because when you did this to me two months ago, I asked four questions and I got one response. You ignored most of the questions. So I'm asking them, and quite frankly, I think to an objective observer, you're going to look foolish, because you are trying to change the rules to have less dialogue with the public and suppress the back and forth that naturally happens when people bring questions up. But I'll move on. I'd like to hear about that Robeson School issue, since that's a new school, and that was built by the SDA. I'd like you to tell us what the extent of your relationship is with Lizette Delgado Polanco, the former head of the SDA. How do you know her, how long have you known her, and what is the extent of your relationship? And I'd also like to clarify on Lincoln Addicts, or I guess the Panquid de Lente Community School, is what we just heard was that there were 623 tons of PCB contaminated soil removed from the site. I'd like to know when that happened, because the site looks much the same as it did on May 12th, when we were all there for that groundbreaking ceremony. It still looks like that. And there's a sign posted there that says, "August 9th, 2021, environmental investigation slash cleanup in progress at this site." So I'd like some clarity on when all that contaminated soil was removed, because I certainly haven't seen any trucks or any proof that that happened. It looks, again, much the same as it did just a few months ago. And, you know, I think the public deserves to have answers to all these questions, so I'll await your answers, sir.
So, Charlie, thank you very much. So the Viata, I understand it was-- anyone who said competitive bid? Rich?
No, I'll have to look into the exact-- but most of these, on the agenda, you'll see many companies with home health aides. Most of those home health aides are chosen because they have one-on-one home health aides at home with the kids. And we try to have a continuity of services to continue that same one-on-one nurse with the student in school. This information that Mr. Crowell is bringing is used to us for sure, and I'm certainly going to research it and look into it.
The-- Great. The leaky windows?
We've noticed some leaky windows over at Paul Robeson, the new addition. We've contacted the school development authority. They had to come out, and we've been looking and investigating what it is right now. It's concerning, obviously, if they're leaking, but right now, we're not overly concerned that SDA is working with us in the contract to try to resolve the issue. And we'll update you as we, Danielle.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I don't have to answer it, but Lizette Delgado has been a good friend of mine for about 20 years. So, yeah, we go way back, long before she was at SDA or any of that stuff, but a very, very good person. And a brilliant person, actually.
Thank you. The 50 Jersey Avenue--
Okay, thank you. Mr. Next person--
I'm sorry, I had a question on the 50 Jersey Avenue. When was the contaminated soil removed from the site?
I can look into exact dates on that and get back to you, Charlie.
Thank you, all the cards, Charlie.
Thank you, Charlie. And we're trying to answer questions we can.
Well, you never answered mine.
Your question was about, one, you made accusations about me, but it was about COVID, how many, you know, so-- Yeah, yeah. Personnel issues, we don't answer. We don't, we don't, we don't talk about personnel.
You're going to say Roosevelt School was closed down?
So-- Who's next? Yeah, Roosevelt School was not closed down.
Well, do you have any case of COVID-19 in Roosevelt School?
Yeah, you're on board. Rich, who's next?
It's Linda Storen.
It's Linda Storen.
You don't have to, you don't have to respect me, but that's why the first time you die, we did it again. She just won't learn.
Good evening. My name is Linda Storen, from the purple bar. And I agree that the site does not-- I was just five days today. I don't see how 28 truckloads, how many tons could have been taken out of there and it's still look the same. And I also agree that this system of asking all the questions and then hearing the answer, and then you have to go sit down because your time was already up when you finished answering the question. So I, last month, did not get to finish my comments. I attempted to have an email that I wrote about that because I was responded to in a way that made no sense. And then I couldn't say anything. And I feel like sometimes we look foolish. Because in fact, of course, I know that there are other factors to a school's effectiveness than the school size. And so what happened was, after you had admitted that you had not read the research report I sent, you apparently glanced down at a found it on your phone, which we also heard a whole lecture about not being on our phone when we're supposed to be doing something else, which in the case that it affected you was driving. But in the case that it affected me, while I was speaking and presenting different research, you were apparently looking at your phone to find the email, and then proceeded to read in a relevant paragraph about how there were other factors. Well, of course, there are other factors. The point in the conclusion of the study was, you know, that this was an important factor. I then proceeded to email me at 7:31 PM. In other words, while I was talking, you sent me an email that said, "Research suggests that urban trauma has a bigger impact on student performance than school size. Look up the impact of poverty and urban trauma student performance." I guess, I was, I was actually quite insulted, and I did reply, although I didn't receive a reply to this. Well, of course it does, and I never said that it did not. However, as a school system, it is not possible to make students not be poor or traumatized by values over which we have no control. What we can do is provide an environment that would be massively helpful to poor and/or traumatized students, such as an appropriately sized school. The summary of the research available on optimal size for an elementary school can be seen in Table 2. And again, I mean, I can just summarize the results of Table 2. Only one researcher even went as high as 500. And this is specifically for elementary schools now. And that was for, you know, well-to-do, that would be for, I know, well-to-do middle class and up students in a suburban area. There is a table that I included with all the studies, all that we reviewed, acceptable studies to Eric Cadiz, on this subject. And the, you know, the consensus is that an ideal size would be under 500. In fact, the state of Connecticut did the research before they built schools, and also did a survey of all the available studies, and, you know, came to a similar conclusion. So, you know, my question is this. This is, this is a factor we could control. Now, I understand you can't have a lot of, you know, elementary schools with 300 students in them, but over 1,000? Now, Lincoln Addicts is still in the ballpark, especially for 4 to 8, as opposed to this one. It's kindergarten to eighth grade. Would you drop your four-year-old? Children who start in kindergarten are often four years old, five years old at the moment. Would you drop them at a school? Or send them off to a school of over 1,000 students? That doesn't even sound right, and the research facts it out. It's not right. It is not a good idea. My other question would be about back to school night. How was the decision made--
Thank you, thank you very much, Danielle. We appreciate more than five minutes, Tom. Thank you, Miss Storen. Rich, who's next?
So, were you going to answer?
I didn't hear a question.
How was--
Is there someone next to Rich?
Did you hear me say, how was the decision made to hold back the school night in person? For the parent?
I didn't hear-- What is the decision made to hold back to school night in person?
As we know, school is open for in-person instruction for our students. And I believe that it's also important that our parents have the opportunity to experience and learn and also see the environment that their school, their children will be-- We have back to school night every year. Last year, we did not, because we were in a pandemic state, but that has been the practice for this district and many school districts, that in September, districts holds a back to school night. This is a, this is a time for parents to really have more one-on-one conversation with teachers, to learn more about the curriculum being offered, to set expectations for the school year. And it's really a good time for relationships, in my opinion, between teachers and parents to be formed. So back to school night is extremely important. I do feel comfortable with the mitigation strategy in place, but I also look forward to feedback from parents as well. So that's the reason, and that's how the decision was made for in-person instruction. Excuse me, in-person back to school night.
I know what back to school night is. It introduces us, even though it's about the risk, which is already--
The next person is Louis Carrera.
Good evening, members of the board. My question is, are schools safe and positive environments? I would like to approach your attention at this question regarding the culture of the New Brunswick schools. As a parent of the first grader, having used personal experience of the schools here in New Brunswick, but having worked with New Brunswick schoolchildren for over a decade, I have, however, had a lot of secondhand experience. I am thrilled to see and hear of the New Brunswick school's commitment to social, emotional learning and to the holistic well-being of our students, the public scene, the physical, social, emotional, mental, as well as the academic. However, it is not clear to me what the pathway for achieving this is, nor what the systems of accountability are. I think this is particularly important given prevalence of mental health issues in our youth, in addition to the ongoing challenges in terms of academic achievement. So far this school year, I have witnessed security personnel yelling at parents at drop-off. I have witnessed teaching staff yelling at small children during fireworks. I have heard of students being yelled at at for questioning transportation. I have heard of first graders being floored and have recess taken away for the crime of, quite frankly, just being children. I could include personal testimonies from children, past and present, of inappropriate things that have been said to them. Overall, schools seem like stressful environments where everyone from top levels of administration down to the students seems to be operating under pressure and present a punitive environment. As you all know, the Muslim-Pratt district schoolchildren face significant adversity in their lives. High levels of adversity have the potential to cause toxic stress. Children facing adversity and stress do not learn. It seems hugely productive and counterproductive to place stressed children in a school environment that often only serves to stress them more. There is already too little recess, playtime, and opportunity to simply be children in the school day. Let's please not increase the time you have at school with constant corrections, scolding, threats, yelling, words, directives, et cetera. All this overwhelms the children and makes schools an unsafe place and not somewhere as they want to be or get excited about learning. I am confident that there are wonderful administration staff here in New Brunswick as a whole, and individual schools in particular. Is the culture one of support and empowerment in the face of many challenges the district faces? Right now, it seems like when under pressure, professionals resort to negative techniques to make control over desired outcomes. What would it take to build an overall positive culture? I've noticed there is culture celebration at board meetings and on social media. What systems need changing or replacing in order to be celebrations to be authentically felt by all the teaching staff and students? Lastly, as a parent, I am more happy to be involved in my children's education and school community. However, so far, there seems to be little opportunity for engagement or inclusion for parental input. I'd like to note that I am a Rutgers intern with Edna's here in New Brunswick. I attended Wrightick School of Social Work, and I am speaking on behalf of Ruth Lockner. So she'd like to thank you, Charlie, for consideration.
Thank you for your comments. We are, as you know, doing the best we can to create a very positive and emotionally stimulating culture. Who's next on the list?
That concludes the public portion of the meeting.
Great, thank you.
Rich, I emailed you.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Bergman did email me, but I didn't see him on the side if she-- He did notify me to answer the meeting. Next time, please, just sign in. Okay.
Okay, I have walked in 7:01, I might have been hit away, but I didn't email earlier. I sent four names.
We'll let you speak, and only you speak. They're not on the list, just one, one person, please.
I--
Either nobody or one person.
I emailed names for four.
They're not on the list, so we're saying, we're going to let you speak if you want to speak. But not only one person.
It was my understanding that the preferred method to answer public comments was to email ahead of time. It is my understanding that the preferred method of signing for public comments was to email ahead of time.
I do see that he emailed me in four P on Dr. Caldwell. With the list of...
All right, we'll let you speak. And one of the things that we say is that if people are coming up the same, saying the exact same thing, there's no additional... You know, by doing that, people are saying different things and so on. So if you could get up and speak then, please.
I will speak after the other three assigned up to speak.
Okay, if you could get up and speak, please. And state your address, please. Whoever's going to speak first? As I said, we encourage you to speak, but we don't want to hear the exact same thing from everybody.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Emira, el nombre del proyecto esperanza, y quiero darle las gracias por estos minutos que nos dan. Lo que no estaba en el... En el... En el... Gracias. Quiero darles un resumen de la encuesta. Mi nombre es Emira, el proyecto esperanza.
Would you email one? Send me a... Send me a... Going to give some...
Es un resumen de la encuesta de los familiares de la escuela.
This is a summary of the circle. Oh, about the school food.
Okay, nos gustaría compartir con todos los contribuyentes del partido sobre nuestros esfuerzos para trabajar junto con el Distrito para la Salud que le conviene a la escuela ser saludable, crezca y sabroso.
We would like to share with the Board of Education our different efforts to work together with the district to ensure that the meals at schools are healthy, fresh, and delicious.
En la primera vez trabajamos junto con Ibraso y Fumo, el DNI Esromes, y Alianza para la Alimentación para crear una encuesta sobre la experiencia de las familias en Ibraso y con la comunidad escolar.
So in the spring, we worked together in Ibruswe, tomorrow, el Alias, Fumes, and the Alliance for... Alliance. For the Alliance of Ibruswe to create a survey about the experiences of families in New Brunswick during school meals.
Entre abril y julio, estamos colectando 191 respuestas de padres y estudiantes. Recibimos respuestas representando todas las escuelas de todos los grados.
Between mid and June, we collected 191 answers of several responses from parents and students. And we also received responses representing all the schools and all the waylows.
Ya se compartió un informe con los resultados de la encuesta, con el administrador, señor Richard Janory, y esperamos que lo hayan compartido con los demás.
And we also shared a report with all the survey results with Mr. Janaro. And we hope that he has shared the report with all of them.
También nos hemos reunido con el señor Janaro y dos veces con dos señores de la junta de educación, como la señora Jennifer Zuchalis y la señora Jennifer Sevilla. Les damos las gracias por compartir su tiempo y escuchar nuestras ideas y presentar la información que la comunidad de la comida y la comida.
También, we have also met with Mr. Janaro and also sometimes with members of the Board of Education, Mrs. Shukel, Chad Bages, and Mrs. Sevilla. We are very thankful for sharing their time and hearing our ideas and also give us the opportunity to present the information about... About giving us information regarding rules and regulations about the meals that are being served at school.
Hoy, mis señoras, del proyecto, han compartido algunos de los resultados de la encuesta y nuestras recomendaciones.
So my colleagues here are hoping to be sharing their reports as well as the survey responses.
Good afternoon, my name is Lada Fernandez, I'm living in High Street in Ibruswe.
Good evening, my name is Lada Fernandez.
And today we talk about the meals in the school. And I want to talk about the strippers and the food. Everything has rules, the... Uh, salt and... What is it? El azúcar y la grasa tienen una medida. I mean, sorry, la sal y la grasa tienen una medida, pero la azúcar, los niños consumen demasiada azúcar en los desayunos.
So sugar and fats are being measured and students are eating too much sugar and fats, especially sugar during breakfast time.
Las encuestas que realizamos, incluyendo todas las escuelas y toda la comunidad, este 1% dice que está de acuerdo que los desayunos tienen demasiada azúcar.
So we told the survey that we received, that the response that we received, 31% stated that school meals had too much sugar.
Recomendamos al distrito que se abreste un límite en la cantidad de azúcar en las comidas escolares.
We would like to recommend that the district limit the sugar in the different meals.
Así como lo hay para la grasa, las calorías y el sodio.
In the same way, there is for fat and sodium.
También queremos hablar de las frutas frescas que comen en el desayuno.
We would also like to address or talk about fruits and vegetables that are served.
El 39% de las personas encuestadas dijeron que las frutas no son suficientes.
So 39% said the fruits are not enough?
Nos gustaría que hubiera más frutas y verduras frescas en la comida porque las frutas aportan una mejor salud.
So we would like that vegetables that are served in meals because they contribute to the better health.
Recomendamos que el distrito escolar puse una forma de común de incluir frutas y verduras frescas, sobre todo en las escuelas escolares.
So we recommend that the district finds a way to provide more fruits and vegetables, especially in meals and memory level. Thank you.
Muy buenas noches, y nos vamos a dejar en la roca. Y estoy aquí para plasmar las comidas bañadas y del chida. Good evening, my name is Amina Ropas, I'm here to speak about expired fruits. Les voy a compartir un poco de las encuestas. Un poco más de 50, digo, que el 50% dijo que las comidas a veces tienen artículos sana. Quizás el 40% que tienen artículos pensibles.
So 50% of the responses stated that foods are damaged and 40% said that there are expired items.
Es importante enlazar con esos problemas porque manteniendo salud a nuestros niños tendrán mejor aprendizaje. Y no perderán clases por temperaturas, por lo que le van a causar la comida arañada y del chida.
So it's important that they receive food in good condition so they don't get sick and then miss school, is what it means.
Ya que un niño sabe que tiene más posibilidad de aprender en este sentido.
And healthy student has 100% possibility of growing.
Sabemos que el distrito ya tiene un formulario básico en página web para enviar comentarios, pero creemos que deberíamos hacer algo específico para la comida que publiquen en el menú que sería... A la salsa.
So we are aware that the district has an area in the website where your parents can provide food, but we would also like to request that this is posted in the menus and the information that is being sent home.
Bueno, también queremos hablar un poco de platos culturales para hacer una variedad de comidas.
We would also like to address cultural dishes that are being offered.
Los cuantos de la encuesta, 28% dijo que las comidas escolares eran a veces como la comida que comen en casa. El 56% dijo que las comidas escolares eran casi normal o normal como los alimentos que comen en casa.
So 28% said that school meals were sometimes like the food that they eat at home. 56% said that foods are almost never or never like the foods that they eat at home.
Deberíamos hacer más platos culturales en las comidas escolares.
So we should make more, we should offer more cultural dishes in during school meals.
Recomendaciones de agregar algunos platillos culturales al menú y que traban en comemos en la comunidad para identificar recetas apropiadas.
So the recommendation is that more cultural dishes are added to the school menu and that they work with the community to be able to obtain a recipe.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Charles Bergman, 13 Stratford Place. I'm a parent of three children at Redshot School. My day job, I also work with the New Brunswick Tomorrow's Director of Rescind the Neighborhood Project. First, I'd just like to acknowledge and thank the parents for sharing their experiences and their work on the school food survey. We've been working, several board members, Mr. Janaro, have been in conversations they mentioned for over a year, talking about school food. And we look forward to continuing to work with you on that. But we'll say it's not happening, it is hard to have conversations and public comments when we're trying to work constructively with you all. But putting that aside, I would like to actually just make a comment personally as a parent on that about COVID mitigation strategies in the schools. I am very glad that students are back in person. My three daughters are thrilled to be in the classroom again with their teachers and classmates. Appreciate everyone in the district that's worked to make that possible. I think we agree that COVID strategy should be based on the most updated guidance from public health authorities and the best available science. That's why I agree and definitely support the state's mask requirements, universal mask requirements, the vaccine requirements for school personnel. It's why I'm enthusiastic that the district is working to provide testing for students. I already opted our children in. But with all that in mind, I was also surprised and disappointed when at school orientation I learned that New Brunswick was using plastic desk bearers, the transparent shields around all desks, I believe, from at least first grade, I'm not possibly kindergarten, I'm not sure about kindergarten. The reason I'm surprised is because I've been following this pretty closely and classic desk bearers have not been recommended mitigation strategy from the CDC since at least April, when they revised school guidance nationally to reflect the best available science on how COVID spreads. They are also not mentioned at all anymore in the department, the State Department of Health school guidance. Not only do they not appear to be effective in stopping COVID transmission in settings like schools, but some experts think they actually might be counterproductive in indoor settings like classrooms because they can actually impede ventilation, which is, we now know about COVID ventilation in indoor settings, it's very important to keep virus particles from getting trapped. One exception, of course, may be the lunchroom, or there may be a justification for it because students are masked, they're eating, they have a tendency to want to move up together. But when I learned this, I was furious and started asking around and I have yet to find a neighboring school district that is using these barriers. Tidler Park is not, East Brunswick is not, Franklin Township and Somerset are not, among others. Now, if these barriers were just a minor inconvenience like temperature taking, it wouldn't be a big deal, but of course, it's something that can be disruptive to a normal classroom environment when we're trying to best get students back to a normal learning environment. My first grade daughter does mention how they can be distracting and sometimes makes it difficult for her to see the presentations that the teacher is giving. Now, that inconvenience might be worth it if you were approving COVID strategy, but they are not. And again, we appear to be one of the only districts in the area that has decided to use them. So I would like to recommend or request that New Brunswick reconsiderably evaluate the use of these plastic barriers to make sure that they're following the most updated guidance from public health authorities, the best available science, and I hope you'll take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson, if you want.
Thank you, Mr. Bergman. Just to follow up, I do, I am familiar also with some of the thoughts regarding the barriers. At this time, we did have an optional when we were in person last year, but due to the spike of the variant and understanding that our students do take their mask off sometimes to speak while they're learning, and understanding too that when they speak, there are micro particles that do come from out. At this time, we still believe that it is the safest. We're all looking at that. Once we start to take a look at our testing and to see where we are in the district, we may adjust that. I do understand your questions regarding comparison to other school districts, but I will also ask you to take a look at their numbers compared to our numbers and then maybe we can have an answer. Is ours low because of the barriers? Even though I do understand schools have different mitigation strategies and I don't want to compare my numbers to other school districts, but maybe we should look at their numbers compared to ours as well. But we're only in the seventh or eighth day of school. We will definitely look at those things and adjust as we move forward. So I do appreciate that and it's not something that's off the radar, but that's where we are standing still for now.
Thank you, thank you very much. Before we move on to item number 12, I skipped over item number 10, the president's report. And I wanted to talk about negativity. My mom, my mom is 86, she lives with us in New Brunswick and watches all sorts of different news shows. And it doesn't matter whether you watch conservative or liberal or moderate news shows, they're thriving on negativity. Everything's negative and this country has never been more divided. Because their candidate is horrible, your candidate is horrible. You know, we come to these meetings and all we hear are our problems in New Brunswick. Yet there's so many, we've just gone through a pandemic, there's so many wonderful things that are going in the district and we talk about it. So I think it's important to talk about your concerns, but it's also important to celebrate what's going on. And as I said, I have a daughter who's been here for 14 years. And this district has done so many wonderful things in a very, very challenging time. And so as New Brunswick residents, as citizens, as Americans, I think it's important for us to celebrate what's good with things instead of spending so much of our time in media and social media about the negatives. It's so easy to complain, but it's hard to really say, okay, well, this is wonderful. And so I encourage, and I'm not just talking to everyone here, I'm talking to, you know, this will be on New Brunswick Tomorrow, the website. We as a country have to focus on positivity. That's part of the mental health challenge that we have now. Why mental health is coming to the surface is because so much is negative, so much is wrong. As many of you know, I'm very active at tennis and many of the tennis players would lose a match and get death threats on social media because they lost the match, a tennis match. So as we begin to think about what this does to kids and other people when we're complaining about things, let's try to be positive. We're in this together. There's no one here that doesn't love every kid in New Brunswick. We are part of this solution. So I'm encouraging all of us to work together to make this district, to make New Brunswick, to make America all that it can be. And let's move beyond negativity to positive encouragement, support. Thank you very much. So item number 12, the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to accept the consent agenda? Is there a second? Second?
Yeah, I have a second.
Good, roll call, please.
Mr. Ortiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Sodowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Seewood?
Yes.
Mrs. Sekaitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Spencer?
Yes, I stand on 14.
You're from the finance report, correct? Ms. Varela?
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla?
Yes.
Dr. Cogla?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Item number 13, the finance committee report. I make the motion to accept the financial report as presented. Second? Okay, roll call, Mr. General.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Sodowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Seewood?
Yes.
Mrs. Sekaitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Spencer?
Oh, yes, I stand on page 14.
So noted.
Page...
Yes, sir.
Agenda eight. I stand on.
Thank you. Ms. Varela? Ms. Sevilla?
Yes, I stand on page 26.
So noted. Dr. Cogla?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, item number 14, the resolution for... Okay, item number 14, the resolution for closed session. I'll read the resolution and then we'll take a motion, second, and vote. Whereas the Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA 10:46, provides that certain matters of a public body may be discussed in closed session and whereas the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows: personnel matters, matters of attorney-client privilege. Now therefore, be it resolved that the aforementioned subjects shall be discussed in a closed session by this Board of Education and administrative staff and the minutes of said closed session discussion will be made available to the public when the reasons for the nondisclosure in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act no longer exist. Is there a motion?
No move.
Is there a second? Roll call, please, Mr. General.
Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Sedowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Sekaitis.
Yes.
Mrs. Spencer.
Yes.
Ms. Varela. Ms. Sevilla.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
We are in closed session.
All right.
Do you consider taking the evidence with Belvedere Street?
All right. We're back, we want to resume the public session. And we'll start with the Personnel Committee Report. Mr. Benito Ortiz.
Yes, thank you. The Personnel Committee met earlier this afternoon. We had discussions on personnel issues. And I just need a motion to accept the Personnel Report.
No move. Second, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, Mr. General.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Sedowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Sekaitis.
Yes.
Mrs. Spencer.
Yes.
Ms. Varela. Ms. Sevilla.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Motion approved.
All right, item number 16, adjournment, is there a motion to adjourn? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We are adjourned. Thank you all very much, have a great evening.